Again, huh? Trash bags are for the birds.
They really are. It drives me bananas. 11,000 pounds, that's how much trash I throw in this truck every day.
There's a better way to keep Jamestown clean. Let us show you what we can do. Starting spring 2023, we'll put an end to messy trash bags and instead provide a container for you before you have charge. We'll also offer recycling pickup at your curb so you can easily put your can in the can. No more bags on the street, no more recycling hassle. Just wheel your cans to the curb by 7:00 a.m. on the day of pickup. And that's not the only thing we can do. We're getting new front-load trucks for better visibility so we can see people and traffic much more easily. And by the way, your pickup day will change, but we'll make sure to let you know well in advance.
Man, I love talking trash. Man, I love these awesome new trucks, especially the bulky item truck.
We can be safer, we can be more convenient, and we can be better for the environment just by switching from bags to cans.
Those are my colo days.
So be on the lookout next spring for your new cans to arrive. Visit jamestowncando-nc.gov for more information about our new can-do program, including the day of the week for your new pickup.
So, how much training does it take to become a trash collector? Not much, you pick it up as you go along. Cheers.
We're ready. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Wolf?
Here.
Councilmember Capes?
Here.
Mayor Montgomery?
Here.
Councilmember Strawn?
Here.
Councilmember Raber?
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge. Councilmember Raber, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Counsel, do we have any changes, additions, or deletions for the agenda?
I'd like to request to add Budget Amendment Number 13 to the consent agenda. Add consideration of approval of ARPA Guilford County contracts as Item 9(c) under Old Business. Add consideration of award of new contract to Dillon and Griffith for storm drainage improvements as Item D10 under New Business. And add the consideration of award of contract to WAASFOR Incorporated for paving as Item 10e under New Business.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Thank you. And Counsel, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have three questions on the consent agenda that Matt might be able to answer. They're just quick ones. I noticed that on one of them, the Alliance Code, they billed us for an ACO, basically, incident that happened in our town. Just wondering if, is this going to be a regular thing for them to take up doing animal control calls versus us using the folks with Guilford County?
I can explain that situation. I think that they responded to a citizen's request who was concerned they referred them to animal control. So that was, it was a referral over to a different agency.
Okay. All right. The second is another quick one. The fire inspections, for the follow-ups, can we get those defined as far as whether or not they went the first time and the business was not open and then they came back? Or whether it was a violation and then, you know, follow-up action taken?
Sure, I'll ask the fire marshal if he can address those.
And then last but not least, notice that one of the agenda consent agenda items is is to add back into funds that DOT said were not reimbursable. Can you give us an example of what was not reimbursable?
I'm going to defer that over to Paul now that he's more well-versed in that particular issue.
On each project, there were some items that were not reimbursable. On the East Main Street, there were some castings that were used to adjust manholes that did not go through all the DOT channels to get signed up. I think those amounted to around $2,100. On the East Fork Project, there was quite a long list of items that they said were, they didn't have the proper documentation on in November, and we started re-presenting it to them and they found 90-some, over 90% of them. But the $17,000 roughly, it was mostly silt fence material, seed, and fertilizer where the, I think some of the tags that come with those products and some of the documentation, either they couldn't find them in their files or the, we feel like they went there, but when we went, when Summit went there for us, they couldn't find all of that documentation so that those items could be reimbursable. But they were mostly temporary construction items. There was something with the, there was a concrete item that was a small portion of it, I don't remember, but if you'd like, I can...
All right. Thank you. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Does anyone sign up for public comment period?
Yes, Sheri Richmond.
Sheri Richmond, 601 Tangle Drive, Jamestown. I've looked over the Horton information and a lot of things have been done so well. But as most of you know, I'm concerned about trees. So I thought I would just give my public input about the landscaping section of the Horton and try and connect it to our guiding principle for our comp plan, which is the quality and health of the natural environment is as important to our community as the quality of the built environment, et cetera, that goes on. So looking through that, I copied a couple of pages. There are some tweaks that could be made that would make a big difference in the long run. One, and I know this is sensitive to some people, would be the white fences. They have to be maintained. And that would be pollution from certain tools would have to do the weed eating, that's a lot of fence, or it would be weed killers. So that's, I just think that's a tweak, just reduce a lot of fencing, because I see it in several sections of having white fences. And I know that looks pretty, but I'm looking at the environment. Let's cut out some of that. Also, the new research on a mature tree that's come out. One mature tree takes out the carbon for one car for 1,500 miles. That's more incentive for us to look at what we can do either now with the Horton property or in the future with other properties. How can we change things? How can we adjust things to really look at what's important for us to breathe? We have to do that first. Then going back to landscaping, a lot of things about understory trees and not enough about canopy trees. You know, and I know you've probably gone over this with a fine-tooth comb more than I have. I'm just reading the results and it wasn't in the discussions, of course. And then the, before I run out of time, last page. At least, this is landscaping plant selection 6.71.4. At least 10% of the trees in this section designated for apartments shall be canopy trees. Why can't we have more than 10%? It just doesn't seem like much at all to have canopy trees if they're that important from recent research. And then another thing just to mention, 6.71.5. Pollinators shall be considered for planting in appropriate locations. Considered, why can't we have it required that we have a certain percentage of plants for pollinators? How big an issue is that for us to be able to do? It is in the long run. We want those pollinators. They're important for our food supply. Over a third of our food supply needs those pollinators. And you check with any of the garden club members, we can tell you what to plan. Thank you. Thank you, y'all do a great job. Thank you. Sharon Apple, would you come to the podium?
Madam Mayor, we have another speaker.
Another speaker? Okay, I'm sorry.
Robert Frederick.
Robert Frederick, 500 Windwood Drive. As part of the consent agenda, Mayor and Counsel, you approved the minutes from the January 17th, 2023 regular council meeting. At those meeting minutes, it says, among other things, that I played audio clips. So I wanted to be sure to include in the public record what one of those audio clips was. It was from October 11th, 2022, and a statement made by you, Madam Mayor. You said, "At 1 hour and 31 minutes and 42 seconds into that meeting, one item of utmost importance is matching up the state of North Carolina public notice requirements with a reasonable prediction of when we have a development agreement that is essentially complete. Our attorneys have advised us that we will likely need yet another public hearing, properly timed, after a completed draft to the development agreement has been placed on our website. So if your concern is not having had a chance to review the final development agreement, this has been addressed and remedied." It was addressed, but never remedied. As we saw, three hours into the meeting on the 17th of January, just last month, Council Member Wolf read a statement from the Section 6.5.1 Design and Compliance section of the development agreement. She said we should add "and approved by the TRC" to the end of that statement. She was reading the version that the public had. However, it became clear that she was reading a version that you all, the rest of you, did not have. It was not a version that was made available to the public. It was a version in which you said, Madam Mayor, that language is already in the one that I'm looking at. Councilmember Strawn, you confirmed this by holding up some other version that was never made available to the public. So what non-public version was that? What version was actually adopted? What version was actually voted on? On the town, Jamestown's current website, it has a link to a 94-page version of the development agreement that was registered with Guilford County. That version is 10 pages longer than the version, Councilmember Wolf, that you were reading from. 10 pages longer than the version the public had. And that version, which was backdated by four days to try to, I think, comply with public notice requirements, that version itself was 30 pages longer than a version that was released only a few days before.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else signed up?
Katie? Nobody else signed up.
Now Sharon Apple, would you come to the podium? And Councilmember Wolf, would you please present the resolution from the council?
I would be happy to.
It's an honor. Thank you, Sharon. Did you think you'd be back here so quick?
No, it isn't.
This is a resolution honoring Sharon Apple, accounting manager and human resources on her retirement. Whereas on the occasion of her retirement on January 27, 2023, it is fitting and thoughtful to recognize her and Apple for her tireless dedication to the town of Jamestown with her more than 16 years of service. Whereas her work ethic, attention to detail, customer service skills, and capabilities led her to assume countless tasks and allow for the town to grow more smoothly and efficiently. And whereas her loving demeanor and patient attitude has helped employees navigate complex issues, feel special on their birthdays, which they did, and feel supported during times of need. And whereas Sharon has taken all of her responsibilities very seriously, especially her duty to provide employees with access to a variety of M&amp;M's at all times, especially not for apples, which is the only one I might say. Whereas she was always happy to help town staff and council to tackle all sorts of issues, big and small, which she helped me to do. Whereas her punctuality was unrivaled, however, her insatiable need for speed was undoubtedly a contributor. Whereas town hall will not be safe down there and the decaf coffee pot will wholly be abandoned. Whereas the positive impacts that Sharon has made to the town of Jamestown due to her public service and her value to the town cannot be measured. And whereas after 16 years of tireless service and sacrifice, now is the time for Sharon to spend her time with her family and a lot of grandchildren without regard to what may come on Monday morning. Now, therefore, I, Martha Stafford Wolf, Mayor of Tim, on behalf of Lynn Montgomery, Mayor of the Town of Jamestown, and our Town Council, do hereby express our deep appreciation to Sharon Apple for her distinguished years of service and do extend our best wishes in the next chapter of her life. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be entered into the official minute book of the Town of Jamestown to stand as a tribute to the work and service of Sharon Apple. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
We're going to miss you.
I wish I could say this.
At this time, we'd like to present a resolution honoring Mary Browning and her family and historic Jamestown society members are here. We appreciate all of you being here. And at this time, would the family please come to the podium? And Councilmember Raber, would you please present the resolution?
Glad you're all able to make it. All right. Whereas Mary Browning was undeniably a treasure to the Jamestown community and whereas her efforts to research and transcribe the history of the area are unrivaled and we are all indebted to her for her life's work. Whereas she was an early member of the Historic Jamestown Society and her dedication to encouraging historical preservation in the area led to a yearly tradition of awarding the Mary A. Browning Historic Preservation Award to those who shared her mission. And whereas she was a multifaceted and extraordinarily talented woman who used her incredible research and writing skills to bring awareness to others about the community she loved through many publications. And whereas Mary Browning was not only a gifted historian, but also a wonderful mentor who was always willing to help those that wanted a deeper understanding of our community. And whereas she touched the lives of all those lucky enough to know her through her sharp wit, sense of humor, and generous spirit. Now therefore, be it resolved, I Rebecca Mann Rayborn, on behalf of Lynn Montgomery, Mayor of Jamestown, and the Town Council, do hereby express our great appreciation for Mary Browning for the dedication of her time and talents to our community. Yet further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be spread upon the page of the official minutes of the Town of Jamestown to stand as a tribute to Mary Browning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Matthew, would you introduce our next guest?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Grab our lights. One of the North Carolina League of Municipalities' most important responsibilities is representing the municipal viewpoint before the General Assembly, our Congress, and the administrative rulemaking authorities. To effectively lobby and advocate for what's in the best interest of cities, towns, and their residents, the public and government affairs staff works directly with our legislators, government agencies, and employees, and other policymakers to ensure that municipal officials are involved in the process of setting policies and rules that affect municipal operations. Each year at the General Assembly, a number of bills are filed that would have major and often damaging effects on municipal authority. The NCLM staff and members typically spend substantial time each session working to stop or lessen the effects of these legislative proposals. Or others which have major impact on municipalities but do not fall under the subject matters areas that are approved as a part of their legislative goals. The town staff has invited Erin Winiya, the Director of Government Affairs, and Jordan Cansler, who are Legislative Counsel, bless you, from NCLM to update the council and the citizens of Jamestown on some of the current issues that are before the General Assembly that will be of interest to municipalities such as ours. I did want to say that they got stuck in traffic on their way from Raleigh, so they're very, very glad that they were able to be here and they will come forward and we've got a little presentation to show you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Awesome. Great. Well, it's so glad to be here, I am so glad to be here. It's good to be here in Jamestown and to join you all today. Mayor Montgomery, thank you for the invitation. Matthew, thank you for the great introduction. We spend our days in Raleigh these days working with legislators and so anytime we get a chance to get out and travel around the state is a really good day for us. So I've been looking forward to this all day and we'll probably take the next 15 minutes or so to give a presentation and then take any questions. We can stay as long as you all would like. So here's how our presentation is going to go tonight. We'll give an overview of the League and then I will turn it over to my colleague Jordan to talk about city officials' legislative priorities and the process that we work you all through to set those. We'll give a little bit on the North Carolina political landscape, talk about the long legislative session, and then I think actually we'll skip the last couple ones and just go straight to Q and A after that. So let's talk about the overview. So what is the League of Municipalities? This is maybe something you already know or maybe you're hearing it for the first time. The organization that Jordan and I work for is a statewide association that represents the interests of all cities and towns in the state. That's over 540 of them. We represent the collective interest, like Matthew said, before the North Carolina Legislature, Congress, and state rulemaking bodies. We really, though, beyond that, view ourselves as a one-stop shop for everything municipal. So we can be an extension of your staff and I guarantee you that a lot of the folks sitting behind me have corresponded with some of our colleagues over the years. So what does the League do? We provide insurance services, whether it's property and liability, workers' compensation, or health insurance. Those are offered to any member of the League of Municipalities. We have folks on staff who give advice and consultation. Sometimes that's about legal matters. It could be about HR matters, finance, consultation. All those services are included in your membership. The team that Jordan and I work for provides the advocacy and the lobbying on behalf of cities and towns. We also provide you all as elected officials, training and professional development. And we do lots of surveying of city officials and staff to provide research and information for you. And so I know it's the beginning of budget season. One thing that I know is a hot item that our organization provides is we survey cities around the state about where their salaries are. And so sometimes that's really helpful in the budget process. Generally, we're just promoting good local government and on the Government Affairs team in particular, we do that through the representation before these state and federal bodies. We work directly with legislators. We try to influence them and make sure they understand your business and what happens at the local level. So our team is a really strong team right now. We have eight advocates. I am the Director of Government Affairs. I'm a lawyer and I've been at the League for over 14 years, actually, working in government affairs, which feels like it was yesterday when I just started. But everybody on our team actually is a North Carolina native, grew up all around the state. Jordan is from the Hickory area. I happen to grow up in the Triangle. Jordan is also a lawyer. He's our Legislative Counsel. But you can see from the job titles here that we've got a really good mix of folks who all, I think, have a very genuine interest in public policy and good local government. So it's a really exciting team to work with and if you ever get an opportunity to meet any of these folks, I think you're going to love them. All right. Let's, I'm trying to click and move us on. There we go. Some of the research and information, just so you know what we provide. I mentioned that salary survey that's listed at the top of this bulleted list here. We also provide our best guesses as to what kind of local revenues are going to come in in the next budget year. We do a lot of economic analysis to come up with those. We also provide, skipping around here, weekly email newsletters. Those are really important to our team. It's the way we keep you updated on what's happening in Raleigh and in DC. So if you're not getting those, we can make sure that they come into your inbox every week. All right. Other legislative resources online, specific to our team, that's where we put bill summaries. Jordan is one of the ones who helps us keep tabs on that. And we also put any documents that might help you understand the effects of legislation on cities, such as talking points that you can use in your conversations about legislation. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jordan. I'm going to come back after he sets the stage and I'll wrap up the presentation. So Jordan, want to come on up?
I do think if you just scroll.
Just scroll?
Yeah.
Thank you. Good afternoon or good evening, Jordan Cansler, Legislative Counsel with the League of Municipalities. It's a pleasure to be here and speak with you, Mayor Montgomery.
Thank you.
I'm going to go over some of the process that we went through to come up with legislative priorities with the League. It's quite extensive. So this began back in September, in which we used that particular time to select policy-focused areas because obviously there are so many issues that our members face that it's impossible to address them all. So we came up with key categories and that was from the North Carolina League of Municipality Board of Directors. Throughout this time, through September through October, we gathered ideas with multiple online and in-person sessions, hearing their ideas and just gathering as much information as possible. October through November, we refined those ideas and we presented those to the Legislative Policy Committee. Once that was completed in December, we recommended the particular ideas to the Board of Directors. We finalized those ideas with a vote from our membership, directly from the membership. And then in February, we united behind the ideas and we started to implement all of those. options and also address the inflation mitigation for municipal projects. So part of the long session overview, which is what we're in now, is what I'm going to talk about in general. So the partisan breakdown that we have right now with the North Carolina legislator for the 2023 through 2024 is 30 Republicans in the Senate and then 20 Democrats in the Senate. The other breakdown for the House is 71 Republicans to 49 Democrats. The municipal caucus is something that we've put together. It's 26 members of the House and nine members of the Senate that have municipal experience. It was important for them to have municipal experience to be on this particular caucus. Three senators with a municipal background will hold chairmanships during the biennium along with 13 House members. So general policy focus. So the dominant topics that we're hearing that will be addressed and that are of concern for them are going to be budget adjustments, Medicaid expansion, sports wagering, and medical marijuana, which we just had some movement on that this week. So part of the session timing, when looking at the long session, it's going to be January 11th is when it starts, and it goes through midsummer. And then crossover is May 4th. So the crossover is the deadline in which a bill has to cross from one house or one chamber to the other in order to see some movement. So that's a key date for us and our purposes for negotiations to determine the viability of a bill. Local bills deadlines for the Senate are going to be March 9, and then for the House, it's going to be a few weeks after that, March 23. Dominant political narratives, what they talked about during the short session, inflation, parents' voices in schools, community safety, and abortion. I believe this is when I'm going to hand it back to Erin.
All right. So Jordan just set the stage. Those are kind of the big-picture things that are happening that municipal issues are kind of swirling about within. So most of what Jordan just talked about are not issues that we're going to actually lobby on. They're not priorities of cities and towns, but they are part of what's happening in Raleigh and what legislators are spending a lot of time thinking about and talking about with our colleagues who also lobby at the General Assembly. So bringing that back down to the city focus, Jordan went through some of those broad-brush issues like infrastructure, housing, community development, these big-picture priorities of cities and towns. And so we're certainly going to work to advance those priorities. But amidst all that, we also have to respond to issues that are brought forward by other interest groups. And I don't have to tell you, a lot of those are related to development. And so that's what you're seeing on this slide when we talk about issues to watch. These are ones that we're not initiating, but we're having to respond to. We think there's going to be a lot of attention this session on local land use and permitting. That's a trend that is always there, to be honest, and always has as long as I've worked at the League. But it is one that's predictable, and we think we're going to see proposals that city officials probably are not going to like, and that we'll have to work to try to moderate if they, we call it having legs, if they have legs and they're moving forward in the legislative process. One kind of more narrow slice of local government authority is short-term rentals. I don't know if that's a big issue here in Jamestown. It seems to be a bigger issue in some places than others. But there is interest. There's been longstanding interest at the Legislature to try to, in some ways, preempt or limit local authority to have zoning or other rules around short-term rentals. We often have to watch what police and fire employee groups bring forward. A lot of times, those proposals can be unfunded mandates on local governments. And we always, as representatives of local governments, as employers, represent that side of it. And I know that there's some trickiness to that position, but that is something we always watch to make sure that there aren't big unfunded mandates on you all. Finally, this session, we want to make sure that you all knew that we did anticipate a proposal that would affect you as local officials, more ethical rules that you might have to comply with. We don't know details about that just yet. We just know that there's interest from the state auditor and the state treasurer, perhaps, in giving that some more attention. So those are kind of some broad-brush things. We're still early in the session, so we haven't actually seen proposals on any of those topics just yet. So I can't share a whole lot of detail right now. What we're asking local officials to do is to talk to your legislators. Hopefully, you know them, the folks that represent you in the North Carolina House and Senate. If you have concerns about anything that we've talked about tonight, now's a good time to vocalize that to them, although any time is a good time, but particularly now at the beginning of session. Making sure they understand your priorities as a town. If you have any special projects that are underway that maybe they could help out with some funding, this would also be a good time to be putting that bug in their ear. The budget negotiations are actually underway already, behind closed doors. They're not in public just yet. But these are things that you can be doing right now. This, I think, is the last slide that we have. Marking your calendars. The first item on here is Town and State Dinner. It actually takes place tomorrow night. Registration has been closed. I don't know if any of you have registered to go, but if not, watch for it for next time. It is a big deal. It's when we invite every legislator to come to a dinner with you and your colleagues from all around the state. We expect 550 people to be there tomorrow night in the Raleigh Convention Center. So it's a sold-out event. City Vision is the annual conference that the League puts on every year for local officials and staff. This year, it'll be taking place in late April, on April 25 through the 27 in Concord. They have a nice convention facility at their Embassy Suites there. So we'll be gathering there. I think there's a nice NASCAR race car theme that we'll be doing this year. And that is always a good time to learn a lot and network with your colleagues across the state. So I commend that to you. And registration, if it's not already open, will be very soon, so you can watch for that. This is how to get in touch with me and Jordan if you have anything you want to follow up with us about later. And we'll just take any of your questions right now. Thank you.
Well, I've got several.
Sure thing.
First of all, I want to thank you for coming tonight, and Jordan.
You're welcome.
But I attended all three of the webinars on the advancing advocacy, and they were great. I really do appreciate that. Gives us insight of what, like you say, discussions are just starting to happen. And I know it's just starting, so.
Right.
But I was going to take the opportunity with you here. I'm going to ask you. You might not be able to answer. But the one thing, one of the goals was to, or that was identified. I've got bugs flying over here. I don't know why. If you see me.
There's one.
There's three I've had so far.
You're not supposed to bring the bullets in.
My perfume, I guess. But was, thank you for doing that. But one of the goals by local government was asking for expanding state transportation funding and, or funding streams for construction and maintenance of town roads. And I understand the Pell bill fund is a very small portion of the state budget.
Right.
And just wondering if there's any real possibility of Pell bill funding being increased for the amount given to local municipalities.
We're certainly asking for Pell bill funds to be increased. And you're exactly right. That's the portion of state gas tax dollars that the state will allocate back to municipalities. And we think that's appropriate. You know, you're doing a lot to maintain their roads. We know that locally. So the least they can do is share a little bit of that. We're certainly advocating for that. Just yesterday, the legislators received the revenue forecast that they're going to operate under for the next, really, two years. They do a two-year budget. And it looks really good. They have upwards of $3.5 billion, I think, that.
I saw that surplus.
Right. Exactly. So you would think that, you know, any kind of request right now would be looked upon favorably. I can say that transportation generally is a place where there's bipartisan agreement, and we don't have any reason to think that that's different this time. So hopefully, that's a priority, that's a shared priority that they could support. I think you've got the right idea there with increasing Pell bill.
And then I had read a couple of articles, which was under the Affordable Housing Bill discussion, and you mentioned it here, about legislators considering taking away local municipalities' authority to regulate planning and zoning matters in their town and grant that authority to the state, which, yeah, I think is very disturbing and could be detrimental to the town. So I just wondered if you could see, was that really gaining support, or is it too early to tell?
We do think it's gaining support. There've been public statements that legislators have made, legislative leaders have made. There was a big conference back in December that a think tank in Raleigh put on, and they invited the Cato Institute to come and present on this topic. And they described the affordable housing problem using statewide statistics. And then basically, the solution they offered up was to preempt local regulation. So after that conference, we did hear legislators supporting that idea.
I haven't talked to a single city council person or anybody that's in favor of that bill. Is that coming from donations, from big corporations that are maneuvering these folks that are making those decisions into making that kind of a decision?
I think it is fair to say that development interests would be supportive of this.
So it's part of the dollars, is what the issue is there?
You maybe could, yeah. I think there's some philosophy to, just political philosophy, of wanting a light-touch regulation, regulatory environment, and that would extend to the local level.
It's sad that the state thinks that they can't take care of theirselves for a lot of issues, but that they could actually take care of Jamestown, or Greensboro, or High Point, or whatever, and what they actually need when they probably couldn't even find it without GPS. It's just annoying.
So what we need to do is talk to our legislators about that.
Absolutely.
One-on-one. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. You talked about the short-term rentals, and we have had some issues here in Jamestown and in our surrounding communities with short-term rentals being party houses, noise, traffic. And so I guess I've seen recently, and you pointed out, the article with Greensboro is working on an ordinance to have a short-term rental.
I saw that. Yeah.
And we, the Town Council, had been advised that Wilmington had been sued when they tried to do this ordinance, and they lost the suit, doing some kind of regulated short-term rental. So I guess I'm trying to see, where are we in that? Because we feel like there should be some accountability to the town to know where they are. So you have a contact if it's an out-of-state person, just for the neighborhood to know that we can contact someone when there's a problem.
Absolutely. And we hear that from your colleagues all across the state. That is one of the biggest concerns with short-term rentals. I always have to say this, the disclaimer is go to your attorney. I'm not offering legal advice.
Yeah.
But there are definitely, there is space for cities, even with Wilmington losing its lawsuit, to regulate in this area. And so there was one specific thing that the Court of Appeals, the North Carolina Court of Appeals, said about the Wilmington ordinance, that they said that was a step too far. And it was a lottery system. My understanding is they had said in their downtown, they described this area will have 400 short-term rentals, and there's a cap. And so basically, they were giving away, like, I'm calling it a license. That's a loose term. But if you weren't one of the lucky ones to win the lottery, then you didn't get to rent your home out as a short-term rental. And that was something that the North Carolina Court of Appeals said you can't do.
Right.
But there are still definitely things you can put into an ordinance, like what Greensboro is doing.
Well, yeah. I'm watching to see how that goes with them and maybe file a suit if it's acceptable.
Sure.
But, and then the last thing, and this came from one of the webinars, I think, and if I understood it right, that a bill was filed last week, and it was going to the first hearing in the House Local Committee, about this late audit penalty for municipalities, and that they could withhold our state sales tax reimbursement if the audits were late. And that does seem unfair if the reason for a late audit is due to the auditor era and not the municipality. I think it's happened to us.
Right.
So I just thought, because there's a lack of qualified auditors, for one thing, that such a specific financing, you know, you have to do. And it sounded like that was getting some traction.
We are concerned that it might.
Yeah.
It is something that the state auditor, in previous comments in her role on the Local Government Commission, has expressed support for. And so I don't know if that's where the bill came from, but it is something that's been on the radar for a little while. And you said it exactly correctly. There's many reasons why audits could be late, not always due to the local government itself, right? And so why should the local government be punished by having a portion of its sales tax withheld?
Yeah. Yeah.
And it just sets a really bad precedent. There's no other state statute where sales tax is withheld by the state in order to compel some result by a local government. So just on a presidential level, we worry about it as well.
Yeah. That was a surprise to even hear that as something that was being discussed.
Yeah. Thank you for being so in tune with this. You're absolutely right. Just vocalizing all of these concerns to your legislators before it gets too far in the process, I think, is wise.
Yeah. Right. Well, my only other thing, I don't want to take out, but you said you need to stay all night, so.
Sure.
When you go back, something I have often thought about, when you go back to the affordable housing, because it is an issue, and we do need to have solutions. But one thing I noticed, especially started, it seemed like in 2020, and which everything was upside down, but out-of-state investors would come in and buy the properties that were on the market. They'd pay $10,000, $15,000, $20,000 over price, you know, list price, no inspections, close in 30 days. And so that knocked home buyers out of the market, for one, increased the housing prices, really artificially, number two. And then if they make them long-term rentals, they're controlling the rental market as well and making higher rents, which are making it harder for tenants. So I think that's more of a solution for affordable housing, is some kind of regulation on that than taking away local government's authority. Although I believe in the right of private ownership, and the government shouldn't tell you who you could sell your house to. But that seems like, that's one of the elements in there that's making it hard, too.
You were right. There is a lot in the mix that's disrupting the housing market right now. And, you know, when you go to the National Home Builders Association, and they have economists that work on this as well, they'll point to supply chain problems, driving up the cost of materials, labor shortages. A lot of that's because of what happens at the border. It's stuff out of our control.
Yeah. Well, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anything else from the council?
I'm good. Thanks for coming.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you all. This was wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're going to head back to Raleigh because we do have that big event our night, and we're going to get a good night of sleep.
You'll have to use your time getting home. You need to get.
Thank you. I know.
Exactly.
Wish we could stay. It's so lovely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Be careful.
Absolutely. Have a good night. You, too.
Captain Sensore, do you have a report for us?
Absolutely. Good evening. How's everyone?
Good.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
Likewise.
Before I start with the report, I'd like to introduce my new Lieutenant, Lieutenant Apple. Craig Apple is going to be the Lieutenant for District 3.
Hi there. Welcome.
Lieutenant Wiseman has been promoted to Captain. He's in Internal Affairs now.
Oh.
He knows all my dirt for years, so I gotta be careful. In regards to just the crime stats for the year of 2022, we had a pretty decent year. We had about 1,000 calls for service. We took 225 reports, and we issued about 110 citations within Jamestown. Our objective as the Sheriff's Office in the Jamestown area is obviously preventing crime. But like I said last year, and I continue to echo that, is this year, we've got a bunch of new guys who are trying to get trained. But effectively, we want to be community-oriented towards the needs of the town and how we approach crime. But also, we're going to, as a community-oriented organization, we're going to also up our enforcement app. We took 225 reports, and we issued about 110 citations within city, within Jamestown. Our objective as the sheriff's office in the Jamestown area is obviously preventing crime. But like I said last year, and I continue to, to echo that, is this year, we've got a bunch of new guys who are trying to get trained. But effectively, we want to be community-oriented towards the needs of the town and how we approach crime. But also, we're gonna, as a community-oriented organization, we're gonna also up our enforcement action. We've got a few things in, in mind that we're going to put in place, whether it's from traffic enforcement or hotspots, maybe not necessarily in Jamestown, but bump into Jamestown that could have an effect on, on our town. So those are our intentions from the crime stats. We've got a few projects that we're going to need some of y'all's help on next year, or this year rolling out for 2023. One, we're going to talk about, we, we want to put a project together, talk to some of our businesses to light up their parking lots, even in the evening time, to reduce some crime. And that is a project we're going to put together and make some brochures, and actually go in there and talk to the businesses about, and see what businesses people are targeting and how they're targeting them. Whether it's from catalytic convert theft, or people loitering in the parking lots. It's not a big deal in Jamestown, but there are a few parking lots. If we could talk to the businesses about getting them lit, and also giving them some lit lectures that they could read, and maybe provide to some of their patrons and employees that would help us with that program. To dovetail into that program, there's a few businesses that may not have an alarm system. So like when the Jamestown car, for example, is driving through town, you know, we're looking for alarm calls, but they could also be looking for reflective glass. Sometimes when glass is broken, you won't even see it. So we're going to try to do this program, we're going to get these stickers for all these businesses that have glass that is not an alarm business, and see if they would want to put it on their glass so it'd be highly visible at night for patrol officers' lights to reflect off of them. Some of the other things we've done, we've done like pill drop things. We're, we're trying to address some porch park issues that we're having. So those are some things, we're going to write up a few things and come back to the town hall, whether we put it in a newsletter, or launch them through here, and, and use the department's social media and a couple of other things to reach out to the community and make them aware of those projects that we're trying to do. That's really all I have. If you have any questions about the stats, or if there are anything or any concerns anybody would like to bring up, by all means.
Just a quick couple. Of the 225 reports, how many were part ones?
I don't have it broke down in part ones. We had about, we had one breaking and entering, we had nine assault charges, and six shoplifting. So technically, those are your part ones, the other ones are all other offenses. But if you really need to know which specifically part ones, I could easily get that sorted out to you. I don't think I have it on that sheet.
Maybe about a dozen.
Yeah, I mean, if that... To be honest with you, the numbers are low, I mean, you know, which is not, not just from the doing of the sheriff's offices, the nature of Jamestown, and also, you know, the how we do business. So hopefully, we can continue to do that.
Okay, I have to ask on behalf of everyone else, what's part one?
Oh, so part ones are basically crimes are against the person, like theft, assault, those kind of things. So we consider them part ones.
Thank you.
Well, we usually get a more of a breakdown, but, but I'm always interested in response time. Do you have that?
I might in here. On average, our response times have held to what they've normally held. I know that we've had that conversation. I just honestly don't necessarily have it in that sheet. I did not know that that's something you guys would want to have. If you want to have it, I'd be more than happy to send it out in an email.
Yeah, if you maybe sent to the town manager, so we could have that response.
Yeah, absolutely, no problem.
I've heard so much about vacancies in the sheriff's department. So does Jamestown have adequate number of deputies to patrol?
So as per our contract, we ensure that even if we have somebody out sick, that the guy that's assigned to the Jamestown car, we always have a Jamestown car. So Jamestown, as the town, will have 24/7 coverage. And you've slotted one officer per shift, and that's what we do. Obviously, all the other officers aren't working. If something major is happening in Jamestown, they would respond to it. So the shortage within the department, obviously, doesn't have an immediate effect on Jamestown, but it could, in the long term, have an effect in the sense that as we need some people to come help the guy working in Jamestown, we may not have as many people available. We're not, that shortage is a nationwide shortage in the sense that we don't have people that want to be police officers, you know, whether from political environment to pay, to all the issues. And we fluctuate on shortages, you know? If you look at it on paper, you tell you're only short a few people, but you know how it is, guys are in the academy, and guys are filling in other positions. So we could be upwards of 30 to 40 openings on patrol. And for the sheriff's office, those are big numbers.
Yeah, yeah. I will give you one compliment. In one community, a lady told me, sought me out to tell me, there was a suspicious car with people in the car at 4 o'clock in the morning, and they had been there for some time. And she called the sheriff's department, she said it was like, she felt like two seconds. There was two cars there.
That's not response time.
Right.
That's evidence.
That will prove it. But just was so complimentary, that they, they came, and they even came over and talked to her and, and handled the situation very quickly, so I thought that was great.
Well, we're thankful and glad to hear it, you know, the, the guys and gals out here are trying to do the best that they can with what they have. In regards to response time in general, I mean, that's a good thing. We definitely, you know, like to be plugged into the community. Myself and LT have been talking about going around and breaking it down into neighborhoods. If they have like a, what do you call it, like a homeowners association, we want to try to meet with them and kind of hear about what, you know, what some of their concerns may be. And we're talking about, we're currently trying to get a list of all the businesses that we want to just go in there, kind of dovetail into the reflective glass and the lit parking lot. But just go in there and meet them and see, see what, what's happening.
Well, y'all do a good job of keeping a, a good profile up for the amount of coverage you have, because, I mean, we're not the biggest town, but I see you guys regularly. Fortunately, you're not pulling me over, so I'm just like, it's good.
Well, that, that's good to hear. So, I mean, it helps also that our office is here, so definitely make, make an effort.
Back to your business incentives right now, I would recommend reaching out to the Jamestown Business Association, because that way you could contact a lot of people at once.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, that would be, that would be great.
I, I know that this is thankfully very rare around Jamestown, but unfortunately, in the past few months, we did have a couple of homicides within the, you know, wider Jamestown jurisdiction. So just wondering if you, if, if those just seem to be really big outliers, or if you're seeing an increase in, in that kind of crime?
Unfortunately, I'm here to discuss 2022, not this 20... Yeah, no, there are definitely outliers, you know, I can't comment on some of them, because, you know, but, but if, you know, the one thing I will say is they're both spawned, unfortunately, from a domestics, domestic situation. And, you know, with, with that being said, is honestly, I mean, I had to even say it, from an ounce of prevention, we, we really had a hard time to, to, to do any, you know, preventive measures. All we could do is respond. One of our, to, to give credit to my officers, it came out from a different jurisdiction, and they just basically said, oh, forget about it. And they said, okay, well, as you guys are trying to locate a cell phone, we're, we're going to continue to, to work it. And they literally, just by sheer up and down the road, located the vehicle. And unfortunately, you know, by that time, I mean, already the shooting happened while the person was on the phone. So he, but the point being is, having guys and gals out there really be trying to get in. And another one that happened just not too long ago, again, it's, it's a little convoluted, but it's, it's one of those things, it's not like we have a rash of crime, or, or, or like, you know, drug dealing or anything like that. It's just that it's, they spawn from people that know each other from a domestic, and extremely outlier. I, I think, I've been here since 97, I can't, I'm trying to remember. I was racking my brain that night, when was the last time we've had anything like that in Jamestown? Do you, I don't think we've ever had any of that, so unfortunately, that's just what's happened.
Well, this is just, just asking advice. Would you advise people to get these Ring telepho, um, doorbells that have the key?
I have them on my house, and I, and I mean, I think it's, for the money, it's, it's cheap insurance. The only thing I would say is a lot of times when people have their Ring camera, if they have the footage, they think instantaneously, like, we have some magic ball. Oh, that's so-and-so. But it is, it is definitely a deterrent, and it is, you know, we see that, that those are beneficial to have. The other thing in regards to the Ring cameras, we've launched something called the Real-Time Crime Center, and it's obviously with consent of people. So if you have a Ring camera, and we would approach you, our Community Resource Unit would approach you and say, hey, would you consent to have us having access to that Ring camera? Now, we can't access it just randomly. I can't just go, okay, today, I want to see what Lauren Strong is doing and just click on it. Let's just say, let's just say in an emergency, like something happens in your neighborhood, we could shoot out a mass notification to those people in that system. And, you know, a lot of that stuff is managed through your phone. And you say, would you allow access? Or can we, for that short duration, have that? And it's a new program for us in this area, but it is in other areas that have it. It's extremely successful and helpful. Now, we're not as urban as some of those other area, but I, I do think that it has potential. I'm somewhat of a libertarian, I'd say, I'm a little bit worried about government intrusion, but I will tell you, like, in, in my neighborhood, if they do that program, I would sign up for it, because it, I, I think it brings value to, to what's happening.
Okay, thank you.
Some of the concern with that has just been, you know, when it goes to court, am I going to be exposed as who I am, or is this more like a Crime Stoppers thing?
It's probably be treated more as a Crime Stoppers, hey, man, we have footage, and we want that. I will give a couple of examples. We had a missing elderly, and we were able to go ping those cameras, and, and guys gave us access to review the footage. And we say, oh, look, that's her at that time, walking by that space. And it made us the next morning go back and fly the drones on the opposite side, different from where search and rescue, for example, told us. We didn't necessarily make us find her, but it actually put us in the right direction. She was one field on that side, which we would have probably not searched. And I don't know if you guys remember, unfortunately, and we found that lady alive. But a month before that, we had the lady that went missing on that side. And it was helpful to redirect people a Ring camera that they actually pinged, and were able to see her trying to enter a home via the Ring camera. You know, unfortunately, by the time she was found, it was too late, but it is what it is. So I, I personally find them to be useful if properly managed.
Yeah, well, that's good to know.
Thank you for what you do.
Oh, no, thank you. Appreciate all your support, and I look forward to seeing you guys next time.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Be careful out there.
Thank you, and I will email you those response times.
Thank you.
Does Apple want to give a speech or anything? He's good about talking, I know that.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Chief Carson, would you give us the fire department report?
Not sure what happened to the agenda, because these guys usually always have to follow me, but...
The competition was too much for them.
Hang on one second. No, but we, they've stepped out. So I will say something good about him now, but we are fortunate in Jamestown District Three to have Captain Sansor in District Three. So Jamestown's fortunate to have his experience and expertise, too. But tonight, I will deliver the 2020 report for Pinecroft-Sedgefield. And what we're, kind of the makeup of what the purpose of this is, is to, we're asked to go over our total stats for the year, run numbers throughout our whole district, and then in Jamestown, Station 46 also in particular. So, so thanks for having us tonight.
Thank you.
So we throw in our makeup of the department into this, just to kind of show where we have, what we have on each duty, on each day. In Jamestown, we'll kind of break into that here in a little bit. But, but we do have five stations that are, that are staffed with three-person engines each day, as well as here in Jamestown. Our district map, we're bordered on the left by High Point. You see Jamestown in the middle there, and then the, the area around Jamestown with the red dots is our, the rest of our district. And so calls within Jamestown, get responses from our other stations as well. It's not just Station 46, we have automatic aid agreements with High Point as well, so you'll see High Point units. And really, the philosophy and, and what we go by is closest unit response. So not necessarily the, where, just because it's in this district, this station's going to go. It's whatever's the closest unit at the time, by AVL and other measures, that we can truly send the closest unit to the call for response at that time. Our ISO grade, we, we just went through a reevaluation for our ISO. We haven't gotten that yet. We did that in November, but our current ISO rating in the town is a Class II, and our rating throughout our rural district is a Class III. So we're very proud of that Class II in Jamestown. There's a lot of, a lot that goes into that, and we just saw that again through the reevaluation that we, that we did. And so, so we're excited to see where that goes. We, we should know by now where that is, but they're a little backed up on getting that stuff processed through, through the state, then it has to be sent to ISO. So, so we're expecting to get that back soon, and we'll, we'll share with the, with the town at that point where we're at with our colla, with our ISO rating at that point, too.
That affects insurances, so that's...
Yeah, it's a, it's a direct correlation with insurance. So especially with, with residential and commercial. And so the commercial businesses see the biggest difference when it comes to the lower ratings. Residential does as well, but once you get down to a certain on the residential, it's very, it's very close. But we are at the best that we can be for the residential insurance premiums in Jamestown. And then as well, very close with the commercial as well, too. So Station 46 has one captain and two firefighters on duty 24/7 next door. So there's always three, three people next door on duty. We also have resident firefighters that live at Station 46. We partner with the community college next door. And so we're able to grab and market that opportunity as being the closest station to GTCC and the Fire Academy. That's one of the best fire academies in the state, and the numbers speak to that. That's not just my opinion, but, so we're fortunate to tie into that, and we have a relationship that we've partnered with the community college to where people are coming in here for the academy, they have twice a year, and we offer them a place to stay here. So they're here in the evenings as an additional person on the truck. They're gaining additional experience. And then a lot of times, they end up staying, and we end up hiring them through our, through the department, because they get in, and what better way to recruit than to have them living in the station and seeing the department that way? So it works out well for us, so we're glad to be able to do that in Jamestown as well. Our fire and life safety is a big piece of the prevention portion of what we do. So we've, we've been excited to get back in the schools this year to be able to slowly do that. It hadn't been able to be as strong as we've wanted to, but that's not on our side. That's just more of the schools opening up their doors. So we're getting back in those, as well as the commercial businesses and other properties that allow us to come do fire extinguisher training, or smoke alarm canvassing, or different things. And so we do that throughout Jamestown, and those are our numbers for 2022. We delivered 11 programs, 1,438 adults and children participated. We had 16 staff hours and 13 smoke alarms. And so, again, we were still on the, on the heels of COVID. So we're working to do another smoke alarm canvas coming up in, toward the summer months. And we'll, we'll designate an area of Jamestown, which we do in every district throughout our, throughout our area, and figure out based off when the last time we had, when, when alarms are 10 years out, and looking at areas that really have a need. And we'll, we'll really swarm that area for the day and do a canvas in that area, too. But it's a good, a good time, too, just to, to say, if there are needs for smoke alarms throughout our district, throughout Jamestown, call the fire station, let us know, and we're glad to come bring those out free of charge, and we install those as well. And it doesn't cost the homeowner anything. So that's the service we provide. We get those through the state, through grants and other opportunities, or we purchase those if we need them, so. And that's not just smoke alarms. A lot of times, people ask about hard-to-hearing alarms, if there's people that need, need those or other alternate means to be able to, to notify somebody that may not be able to have the same awareness that if there's a disability or other things, we can provide for that, too. Our training classes for the year, we had a 715, with it being an ISO year. Obviously, we were training a lot to make sure that our hours were where they needed to be for ISO. So you can see those hours there, with a total of 15,467 hours. These are not only hours throughout, throughout what we offer on the, on the job for our personnel. A lot of our personnel are going out throughout the state, throughout other conferences, throughout the country, to, to get as much training that they can do to be better at their job as well. So we're excited, we're, we're glad to be able to offer that, support that for our personnel to be able to get that training, because it is a big piece of what we do. Our total responses in 2022 was 3,886. You can see where Station 46 falls in that order of, of calls for service. And so Station 46, not only, it's just, just to note, it not only responds in the town of Jamestown, it has district outside that it responds to as well, outside of the district lines, or if another station calls for assistance as well. So those, those numbers aren't solely in the town. Those are just the total responses for, for the station next door. The majority of our calls are medical incidents. That's about 60 to 65% of our call volume is medical. Fire incidents at 341, fire alarms 361, and you can see the rest of those as well. For Station 46, the trend stays the same. 438 medical incidents, 42 fire incidents, 121 fire alarms, 22 motor vehicle accidents, and 87 service good intent or other calls. That would catch the rest of those calls. We talked about turnout time. And so turnout time's a big initiative for us. We talk about it every year. And so in the town of, or Station 46, not only the town, but like I said, it encompasses more. So it is going further out. But with that, our turnout time, our objective is to be out of the station in less than two minutes. That's our benchmark 90% of the time. So we work off 90th percentile. What that means is 90% of the times, we can achieve this objective. A lot of times, we think in averages, but for this, we do 90th percentile. So 90% of the time, we're out of the station in a minute and 44 seconds. That's any time, any time of day, day or night. That's encompassing all hours of the day. And then travel time is the time of when they check in route to when they arrive on scene. And that's at four minutes. Our objective or goal for that is four. And so we're really on target with where we want to be for that. We want to lower that as we can, but that's total response time 90% of the time. So there are some outliers in that. So from the time of calling 911 to the time of the fire truck being on scene, it's under six minutes. So that's really something that we're proud of, that our people are proud of as well, to make sure that that's a priority for their daily response of what we're providing here in Jamestown.
That's impressive.
So I mentioned that 60% of our calls are medical incidents. And so I think it's important to note, just to share with the council, a little bit about that. So each year, we host our annual awards banquet to celebrate the accomplishments of our personnel from the prior year. And we held this banquet in January. And I'd like to thank some of y'all that were able to attend, as well as some town staff. And so that's important for our people to be able to recognize them for what they've been able to achieve over the last year. And in 2022, we had four medical life saves in the town of Jamestown. And I just want to take a minute to go through that and what that is. So a medical lifesave award is presented to department members directly responsible for the use of any authorized medical act that results in the saving of a life. To qualify for the award, the patient must have been pulseless with no respirations upon the fire department's arrival and released to the hospital emergency department with a pulse and breathing. So I'd like to read one of those awards that happened in Jamestown because it's special for our people that night. And I think it's special to recognize them in front of you guys as well. And so they're unable to be here with us tonight, but I will, on behalf of them, read an incident narrative for of what happened that night. So in May of 2022, Engine 46 responded on a seizures call. Engine 46 arrived on scene to find a female patient laying in the foyer of her residence. Engine 46 began patient assessment and found the patient to have no pulses. Engine 46 personnel began CPR, applied the AED, which is a defibrillator, and began ventilating the patient with a bag valve mask. Engine 46 also placed a King airway in the patient to obtain and establish an open airway. Engine 46 personnel performed five to seven rounds of CPR, and each time, the AED advised no shock. Engine 46 assisted Guilford County EMS with placing a Lucas device on the patient. The Lucas device is a device that performs automated compressions for the patient. After several more rounds of CPR, pulses were regained. And Engine 46 assisted with loading the patient for transport and sent one rider with EMS to the hospital. So that's a day of response for our personnel. And that's a big impact on the community. And each of our firefighters are trained to be certified EMTs. And because of the call volume that we respond on, medical calls, and we can be there quicker than EMS units can be tied up on other calls or coming back from a hospital. And so it's important for our personnel, for us to recognize them and for them to, for what they do, you know? And I hope that that's okay to share that with you, but...
Thank you.
But there's three more of those.
That's great.
You know, medical life saves, we write a lot of those where the patient outcome isn't as favorable. And a lot of things go into that. But four times in Jamestown in 2022, they were able to be revived. And so we're excited about that. The other, last couple of things, our fire incidents, save-loss analysis for the entire district. And then in Jamestown specifically, 55 million was exposed to fire with a loss of 76,500 with a save rate of over 99%. So that's so high because of some of the commercial properties that were exposed to fire over the last year. And so obviously, the value on those is higher. And so that was the 55 million is why that number is high. But fortunately, we were able to get there and mitigate the issue fairly quickly. So that's our report. Unless you have any specific questions, I'd be glad to answer any of those that you may have. But that's all that I have number ones.
You've got a really good group over there.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Very detailed, thank you.
Yeah. Sure. Your report. Thank you for your service.
Yep, thank y'all.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Derek.
Do what? Use caution.
Moving on to old business, Matthew, would you like to discuss the agreement with Pinecroft-Sedgefield for the property?
Yes, first, let me just thank both the Sheriff's Department and the Pinecroft-Sedgefield Fire Department for all the work that they've done. We got a chance to go to the Pinecroft-Sedgefield Fire Banquet and hear each of those calls, and it's extremely impressive. For consideration this evening is the lease agreement with Pinecroft-Sedgefield for 6,007 West Gate City Boulevard, which the town now owns that property, entering into a long-term ground lease with Pinecroft-Sedgefield for future use of the property for a fire station. The item is still under review. In fact, the town attorney and Chief Carson and I and Katie met this afternoon, trying to work out a couple of little details. We do request a continuation of this item until the April 18, 2023 regular meeting without further advertisement in the Civic Center here at Town Hall.
Motion to continue the consideration of the lease agreement with Pinecroft-Sedgefield Fire Department for the property located at 6,007 West Gate City Boulevard, parcel number 156246, to the April 18 Town Council Meeting at 6:00 PM in the Civic Center without further advertisement.
Second? On favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Judy, would you discuss the amended audit contract, please?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I would request approval of the amended audit contract for fiscal year 22. This, the audits are due December 1st. And if you're later than that, then the local government commission requires an amended contract. The reason that the auditor's put down for the amendment, the primary reason for the late submission in 2022 was due to the initial implementation of GASB-87. Future delays are not expected at this time. GASB-87, I think it took a lot of entities by surprise. It did us. It was a very complicated thing to implement and very time-consuming. And I think that as a result, a lot of entities in North Carolina are going to have late audits. So, you know, there's, I know when we're talking about the consequences potentially of late audits, but so this, hopefully, this will, you know, not happen again.
Yeah.
So I would request that approval of the amended audit contract.
This doesn't have anything to do with it, but when did they change their name?
Within the last year.
John Frank is still there?
Yes.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve the amended contract?
I move to approve the amended audit contract with four of us LLP.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judy.
Okay. And Faith, you have the ARP portion. Counsel, we're going to have three separate contracts that are going to need three separate approvals, just so we're all on the same page.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There are three contracts before you for the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, the coronavirus state, and local fiscal, local fiscal recovery funds agreement between Guilford County and the town. The ARP funds from the county will be used for the following three projects. The Part of and Accessibility for Parks, the AFP project is totaling around $315,000. These funds will be used for the Part of Grant Match and the AFP Grant Match. Funding will be used to improve Jamestown Park with two new shelters, a dog park for large and small dogs, relocating the sand volleyball area, developing a natural play area and a trail, renovating the basketball courts and some sidewalks there. The second project is for a stormwater infrastructure that's totaling around $210,000. Funding will replace a critical stormwater infrastructure feature at the Jamestown Park Golf Course. The stormwater project will prevent failure of a small dam which is adjacent to a major water supply lake. And then the third project is the sidewalk projects. And this is the biggest one. It's around $2,294,795. The town will construct almost a mile of sidewalks. And it encompasses East Main Street from Victory Chapel to Melis Road, Ragsdale Road near West Main Street, Gannaway Street near East Main Street, and West Main Street from Oakdale Road to Dillon Road. Guilford County plans to seek approval for their, for these contracts at their February 23 board meeting. And so March 1st, if everything goes well, the contracts will become effective. And these funds are on a reimbursable basis with the county. We recommend that you approve the ARP Guilford County contract upon approval from Guilford County and to allow the town manager and the finance director to enter into the contract.
Do you have any question?
Well, has the town attorney looked at these?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. I've looked at them, and the only thing I would flag for counsel is that these are reimbursement contracts. And so we've got to appropriate and spend the money. Then we submit the invoices to the county. And it's solely within their discretion as to whether or not they're going to reimburse the expenses. So again, I don't anticipate there being any problem, but I do think it's worth noting that they're definitely reimbursement contracts and will have to spend the money to get the money.
Yeah, well, of course, I feel the town really doesn't have any say because Guilford County has the control of how the funds are dispersed. And it's pretty cut and dry that the county has authority to disapprove a reimbursement. There's no appeal process.
That's correct.
So, and it looks like the deadlines for the invoice process are going to be strictly enforced. And also, if Guilford County doesn't get the amount of ARP funds that they think they will, or if there's insufficient amount in there, then they can reduce the amount that they'll give to Jamestown. But, you know, it's the only way to get the money is to approve it. And of course, in that strict deadline on the December 31, 2026, that all projects must be complete and everything is sent in, so...
Do you want to break out the motions?
They have to be...
Going to have to really stay on track.
It's going to require a lot of, a lot of work behind the scenes to make sure we stay...
Yeah, it'll be a lot of work.
...clients with requirements.
Yeah.
That would have been my only standard question, did Beth review?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Guilford County for Part of and Accessibility for Parks AFP Projects in the amount of $315,205 and authorize the finance director and town manager to execute all documents.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Now, we're looking at the motion for the stormwater infrastructure project.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with Guilford County for the stormwater infrastructure project in the amount of $210,000 and authorize the finance director and town manager to execute all documents.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And last is the sidewalk projects.
Well, I'll move to approve the contract with Guilford County for sidewalk projects in the amount of $2,294,795 and authorize the finance director and town manager to execute all documents.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Faith.
Thanks, Faith.
Matthew, the award of construction contracts.
Yes, good evening. The town staff would like to recommend the award of a contract for construction of renovations at the Jamestown Town Hall to Dreambuilt Construction Incorporated in the amount of $381,468. Dreambuilt was the lowest responsive responsible bidder. And the contract in the packet has been reviewed by the town attorney. I'm ahead of you there, Lawrence. The architect and the contractor were all in agreement that it is ready for signatures.
Questions for Matthew?
Well, of course, we know the CIP budget was $250,000, but I understand this is the second round of bids. So I don't know what more you could do, and that is something out of our control. And I know the need is there now, so I feel like that there's nothing else you can do. You bid it again, and you're just...
Price will go up.
I don't say so.
Unfortunately, I'm afraid so.
Seems that way.
Yeah, I feel that you've done all you can do to try to get the best price.
Correct.
Between the two rounds, how many bids came in?
Paul, there were three. I believe there was, I believe there was four total. The, there was one repeat bidder, if that makes sense. So there were four technically.
Three companies.
Right, right.
Do we pursue and send out AFPs, or do we just put it out and wait for something to come back?
We sent them out to a list of contractors that the architect recommended. I believe there were six or eight different ones that were sent out to invite it to bid. We did get some responses saying, thanks, but we don't have the capability right now to service that. And then there were some that were no responses.
Thank you. All right, I'll make a motion to award the contract for the construction of Town Hall renovations to the lowest responsive responsible bidder to Dreambuilt Construction Incorporated in the amount of $381,468 and authorize the town manager and finance director to execute all documents.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. And now we would like to set some dates.
Thank you very much. The town staff would like to respectfully request that the town council set two special call meetings for the purposes of discussing our fiscal year 23, 24 budget. The workshops would begin at 9:00 AM and run no later than 3:00 PM. The town staff would like to request that those meetings be moved here into the Civic Center at Town Hall to avoid some conflicts with scheduling at the golf course. Those dates are March the 23rd and April the 14th of 2023.
I have no problem with those, other than I'd be out of state for the March one.
Would you like to make a motion to approve them?
Well, I make a motion to set the special town council meeting for the dates of March 23rd and April 14th for budget retreats at 9:00 AM in the Civic Center.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Paul, would you discuss the contract with Republic Services for recyclables?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Here to present the revised contract for solid waste collection with Republic Services. It was brought up at the November 15 meeting. It has been reviewed by the town attorney. As we had Smith Gardner Engineers doing, did the study in '21 indicating this was a move to improve our town services. So it is based on a study. Of course, this talks about picking up solid waste in automated trucks and changes allows the town to pick up recycling at the curb with town staff. They're creating a, the need to find a recycling facility for the materials. And we've spoken with local municipal facilities and commercial facilities. And this was the best option. And this is, we've talked about it more than a few times. I don't know... I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, having driven that, um, logging trail as it is multiple times, it's definitely been needed for many years.
Excuse me.
All right, and I'll read it then. I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with, no, I don't want to.
Is it with C?
Say again.
C.
Item C. Republic Services.
Repo-, yeah, uh, approve the contract with Republic Services and authorize town manager and finance director to execute all documents.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. And Paul, or you can move on to the award of the contract to Dillon Griffith Stormwater Drainage Improvements.
And thank you very much. Um, in the, the current CIP, we identified paving the road to the plant. Um, so people have written on it and seen the need to get it resurfaced. We had one culvert that is in, in really, uh, bad need of repair, another one that is a, um, corrugated product, so we want to put those back in, in reinforced concrete before we pave the roadway, uh, per that project. We reached out to four local utility contractors. Um, the, the catch with this is we're going to try to get, we're, we're going to request that they begin work on a Thursday, because this, one of the pipes is extremely deep, so it's going to put us out of service getting in and out of the plant with conventional vehicles on Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Mondays, we don't have a, uh, a, as much going on in town and, and truck traffic, but we want to be back in service by Tuesday. So, that was why we, um, we reached out. This was in the informal bid range. We reached out to four contractors that we've got a good rapport with, that we've worked with, I'd say, over the last ten years with each of them. Um, only two submitted proposals, and we feel like Dillon, Dillon and Griffith is a, uh, quality contractor, and we recommend their, their contract in the amount of one hundred twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars.
And again, having driven that roadway a lot as well, you come out of there with your back teeth hurting, generally.
I'd like to make a motion to award the contract for storm drainage improvements to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder to Dillon and Griffith in the amount of one hundred twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy, and authorize finance director and town manager to execute all documents.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And one more time.
Um, I'm also presenting a, uh, well, the proposals, it was also informally bid for the paving portion of it. We felt like it made more sense, um, with the scope of the project, to have a utility contractor on the pipe, paving contractors for the resurfacing, and we reached out to three contractors that we've worked with. Two submitted prices. Um, we don't have quite the same time constraint, because we've been driving on gravel all these years, but we do want to, uh, follow up the, um, storm drainage project with it. Wall asphalt, we felt like they gave us an excellent price. They were at a hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. The, uh, contract, which Beth, um, did review for me, appreciated her, her doing that very quickly, um, it, it did have a clause in there with the liquid asphalt price, because that's tied to the price of, of oil. So, um, I feel like it could fluctuate somewhere in the three thousand dollar range might, it, it might, it could drop, but.
Yeah.
So, I requested a six thousand dollar contingency, which is why I requested the amount of one hundred fourteen thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars.
Motion to award the contract for pre- paving to the lowest responsive responsible bidder to Wall Asphalt Incorporated in the amount of one hundred fourteen thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars, and authorize the finance director and town manager to execute all documents.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
I was also, that was a good price. It's good to see a good price. You don't get to see a good bid very often.
Seriously.
I hate to say it, but if you add the two up, we had a quarter of a billion dollars in the budget. We weren't much under it, but we were under the budget, so it can happen in this.
It can happen, yeah, that, that was good.
We'll take every dollar.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
On a serious note, Paul, if, because of the way the world is happening right now, not knowing if what's going to happen across the sea, do we have an, an out clause, um, to get out of the contract in case something does go abroad very bad and those prices just go way out the roof? Or is there something, we're going to drop a check and they're going to start next week?
The storm drainage, uh, as soon as the materials are available, we want them to get started and get that done. The lead time on concrete pipe, i- it's, it's weeks. Um, so far as the work, we're, we're hoping the majority of it will be done within those three days, uh, three, four days, um, over the end of a week and a weekend.
But that cap on the oil is just six grand?
Um, yes, the, uh, the, uh, liquid asphalt price that they referenced was what DOT uses and, and all DOTs use, and, and every month it gets adjusted. It was at six hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. I just assumed it could go up about a hundred dollars ton. It, now, this makes up a very small portion of asphalt, so it isn't like if it goes up a hundred dollars, asphalt goes up a hundred dollars. But, um, it, it seems like we have somewhere in the thirty-some tons of liquid asphalt in the resurfacing portion of our project, so. And I randomly picked a hundred dollars, because I don't.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Matthew, your manager's report, please.
Paul's just really good at numbers. Uh, loose leaf collection began on Monday, October twenty-fourth. It will end this Friday, February twenty-fourth. Uh, we have asked that residents have all their leaves at the curb pretty much by today to make sure that we can get those picked up. Um, there's a little flexibility there, but we're just encouraging people to get them out. We always have a couple of calls right afterwards that says, "Well, you missed them." Well, we had a several months there window to pick those up. Um, but we will continue to pick them up in bags, so people can continue to have leaf pickup, no problem, but just have to be bagged. Uh, the town council, as we just talked about, will continue their budget retreat process, hosting meetings on Thursday, March twenty-third, and then Friday, April fourteenth, at nine AM in the Civic Center here at Town Hall. The public is always invited to attend. Uh, goal number five point four of the council's strategic plan is to evaluate the effectiveness of our current solid waste collection and recycling services. Uh, beginning on the week of April the tenth, the town will move to a solid waste collection system utilizing trash cans. Uh, we will be sending out some important notices to customers in the very near future. Until then, we would encourage our residents to visit the website, www.jamestowncando-nc.gov, to find out important information about the changes that are coming. Um, we're going to be doing some mailings here in the very near future. Uh, we'll have a postcard that goes out that talks about how it works, what you can, you can't recycle, uh, some very good information. We, we keep some, there's a high, uh, quality glossy postcard that will go out to all of our residents. Um, we'll also have a separate letter that goes out that kind of describes what day of the week that they should expect, um, very, uh, there are services, uh, to, to come. I want to thank Dana Benson in our offices for helping split those up, because we'll have pickup on Tuesday or Wednesday. Both the recycling and the garbage will be picked up on the same day, so you only have to take your cans to the street one day a week.
Is, is that for the entire town?
Say again?
Is that for the entire town?
Split between two days?
Yes, they'll be split between two days.
Okay.
Uh, basically, just to, if you're on Oakdale Road and south of the railroad tracks there, it'll be picked up on Tuesday, uh, following up, uh, taking a right on Main Street, if you come up Oakdale Road, take a right on Main Street. All of the eastern side of town, the east side of Guilford Road, our side of town here on Town Hall, picked up on Tuesday. Uh, if you're on the west side, th- there's the remainder of town, um, then you will be picked up on Wednesday. Um, we'll certainly do some, some, uh, notices to the newspapers. Uh, we've got water bills that are going out with that information on it. Uh, Tammy is working on the newsletter, um, and then we're going to be putting some information there with our can delivery, and also, we just rolled it out on social media, and before this meeting, uh, that video that you saw at the last meeting aired as a, as an intro to this, to this meeting on, on YouTube. You can find that video on YouTube, as well as on the Jamestowncando-nc.gov website. Um, a couple of major projects are either underway or.
Matt, I asked you a few more questions about that for notification, and I'll just, you know, hopefully she's not watching, um, but, for instance, my wife, she's directionally challenged, um, so when you send these, this information stuff out, um, whereas who's getting on what day?
Yes.
Where you live, and this, that, and the other, is it going to be specific to a household?
Yes.
Or for an area? So, in other words, what you're saying is I would get an email, or whatever the notice that's coming in the mail that say, "Your day is this day."
That's correct.
So, okay.
So Dana, Dana's helped us split up the customer base, uh, database into the correct addresses on the correct side, and it'll be highlighted, it'll be in color, and it will say, "Your pickup day," and it's kind of in bold and has a yellow highlight, "Your pickup day will be either Tuesday or Wednesday."
Excellent. Thank you for doing that.
You'll be on Tuesday.
Do we have a map?
I'll just go ahead and tell you.
Do we have a map that could go to the newspaper?
There is a map that's on the website as well. It, it gives you a, a, I think it's yellow and blue. One side is this, one side is that, and it kind of tells you exactly which, which day of the week now you have to, if you're directionally challenged. You do have to know where you live on, on that map.
Ex.
Um, but if you have any questions, any questions at all about what that's going to look like after you get the information, uh, we'd encourage people to give us a call. Uh, but let's, let's get the information out first. We're going to work on that, and then I'm sure the front office staff will be glad to answer any questions if people are confused.
Well, I had a question.
Sure.
Um, too, on that. When, uh, you know, we amended that solid waste ordinance back on November, uh, there was a clause in there that allowed the certain communities that had a hardship in placing the standard size, uh, can to pick a smaller size.
So, we're not allowing folks to pick. Um, that's an administrative nightmare. Um, we have identified those existing.
Yeah.
Townhome communities.
It's within the ordinance.
Right.
It says which community.
And those will be receiving a, a smaller trash can.
Okay, so they don't have to choose, they're just going to get it?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay, good, because they asked me that question.
Right, now, we, yeah, there will not be a, a selection process.
Okay.
Or choosing, uh, because it's a, it's a extreme cost to the town, uh, to provide two separate sizes.
And the reason for it is because they needed the smaller size anyway, so it made no sense. But that, that answers my question.
Sure.
I'll let them know that they were looking for some kind of form or something. They had to pick something, but they'll, they'll be getting that.
We have identified those, those particular neighborhoods.
Perfect.
And will deliver those when we roll those out.
Everything out.
People should be getting their cans. Uh, we're looking at, basically, a few days before we go live with this, uh, so it'll be, the, the idea is that once they get it, most people will go ahead and start using it right away. Um, we will not have a garbage pickup on April the seventh, that's Good Friday, um, and then we'll start immediately the following week with, with a can service.
And that'll be on Tuesday?
That's correct.
Okay. Will recycling also change to Tuesday?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
As far as bags outside of cans, is there any verbiage relating to that that's going to go out in the message?
It, it is. It's in all of our, all of our literature. If there are ca- uh, bags that are outside the can, we will not be able to pick them up. If there are bags in our recycling stream, we will not be able to pick that up either. I don't think people realize that if there's, that's considered contamination, and if there's contamination in it, the entire load goes straight to the landfill. That's not responsible. Um, on behalf of the town, we want to recycle, we want to encourage recycling, so we will be very strict. We will have folks that are riding along in our, in our trucks. We'll, we'll double up staff for a few weeks until we can get people used to that, you know, that, 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 um, process. Um, I know that we have invited you all to, Republic Services is kind enough to, uh, offer a tour of the recycling facility, so we're going to be able to go and see what that looks like, um, but I know that the bags that, that get in there, they, they will shut the system down, and they have to get in there manually and cut, cut those bags out, uh, so that is considered contamination, um, and we will want to do the right thing, so we want to make sure that we are strict in our enforcement of that process.
Right, and I mean, obviously, you don't want to write a pull-up, but you just need to make sure we get pull-up points.
Right, absolutely. Uh, we have, uh, stickers or, uh, notices that we'll put on the cans and, and let people know, "We weren't able to pick this up because it has, you know, your, your recyclables in bags." It's pretty easy, just put it in a paper bag, um, those recycle, or you can, uh, put it in, in the can loose. Yep.
Pretty good instructions on bulk items and those sort of issues?
Yes, so, uh, bulk pickup will have a, that'll be in the literature as well. We'll have at least one bulk pickup that's scheduled every month. Um, that'll be on the first Thursday of each month. That's what we're aiming for now, and if we see that there's a big need, we may add another day.
Well, the, the, um, front office staff will have a lot of questions for.
Yes, so.
Or a few, so you can get it straight.
We actually asked them to come up with the frequently asked questions.
Yeah.
Which is actually on the website as well.
Okay.
So, they did a great job of coming up with a great list of questions that they anticipate receiving, uh, so we're trying to preempt that by getting that information out as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the new trash truck did, you know, tour around, I guess, ju- trying out the route, and I'll, I'll admit, my kid and I ran outside to, to see it, and then we looked up and down the street, and everyone was coming to the end of their driveway.
I'm sure.
To watch this amazing truck go around. So, I don't think the education is going to be that much of an issue, because people are like.
Fascinating.
You know.
The drivers.
Big news, yeah.
The drivers are, are training on it now to make sure that they have, don't have any hiccups. Um, it's a brand-new system. I think the, the first time that they tried it, uh, they kind of launched the can over top the, the truck, and, yeah, so it's, it takes a little bit of getting used to, and they're doing a great job.
Yeah, well, good.
Any other questions on?
Happy folks and some sad folks.
I know.
That's true.
Any other questions on, on trash? All right. A couple of different projects that are currently underway. The, the golf course strategic plan is complete. Uh, we'll be discussing that with our Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee at their meeting on March the sixth. Uh, the consultants will be at the April council meeting, April eighteenth, uh, to present information to the council. Uh, that's our strategic plan, goal number five point seven. Any questions on that one? Okay. Uh, the golf maintenance building is currently under construction. That's goal number five point six. Uh, we are waiting on a roof, um, but they have made a lot of strides now that it has stopped raining, thankfully. Uh, the Red Miller Park bathrooms, the bid did come in over the budgeted amounts, um, and the project has been on hold, but we will be placing that back into the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget, uh, to allow us to get, uh, past the Music in the Parks series, which begins, and I'll talk about that here in just a few minutes, but it begins in May. Um, Town Hall renovations, uh, as you just awarded the, um, contract for that, will be beginning soon. That's goal number five point five. Uh, golf course bathrooms, uh, we've been waiting for building permits from Guilford County, planning an inspections department. Uh, did get a, uh, one comment that came back is that they wanted a, a set of plans that were stamped on one of the pages. Got that. It's been submitted this afternoon, so we're believing that once they receive their permits, they'll start dem- demolition out there. Uh, golf course staff, the maintenance staff have been, uh, removing some trees that are around the existing, uh, building. Uh, we figured that this was a gr- good time to get rid of some of the conflicts that they have right there underneath that, um, that building. Uh, Music in the Park will be, um, the schedule's been completed. Uh, all of the events have been posted on our Facebook site, uh, with a complete lineup Facebook site, uh, with a complete lineup of all the bands and our, um, vendors, our food and beverage vendors. Uh, we are working, uh, and we have a lot of comments on, they'd like to see a wine vendor. We are working on that to see if we can identify a wine vendor. Uh, one of the challenges that we have with that is that we do not want glass in the park. There, we have a lot of children that come out there. We don't want anybody getting hurt. Uh, so we are working to try to see if we can identify a way to do that. So, stay tuned for that. Um, any other questions?
Uh, well, I think I had, had mentioned to you earlier about the Parks and Rec Maintenance Building. If, as I recall, when we met with the architects, there was to be a stripe around that building, so it doesn't look so plain.
I will, I will contact them, and I believe it's the.
I didn't know Paul knew the answer to that, if he remembered.
Paul, the, the stripe that goes, the decorative stripe that goes around the, uh, golf maintenance building, that would be, is a, a paint on stripe, correct? I, I, I can't recall.
I believe so.
Yeah, I can't recall if that was still in the contract or not because of pricing, but I will, I will verify that.
Okay, great. I appreciate it.
As far as the, uh, the wine truck?
Yes.
In terms of pricing, are any of them, like, cutting the price down if we supply cups?
Do you want a really large cup?
Well, uh, I would literally supply them, uh, supply cups that were used were friendly to the car.
We, we actually have a, we have a phone call with a winery, a local winery, uh, next.
Maybe YOB.
Week after, next week. Trying to, trying to work out some of those details, um, but I'll keep that in mind. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Counsel, do we have any committee reports?
Well, I, I had a, um, the Piedmont Area Regional Transportation Board meeting on the 15th, which is maybe more like regional transportation issues, but they did talk about, they are trying to purchase vans for their van pool, uh, because they have these 18-passenger vans, and there's a shortage in the chassis for Ford and Chevy, and they were being quoted 18 months, but have been told it will probably be longer than that. So, it just echoed what we have been experiencing. It's, it's everywhere.
Two years for it.
But, yeah, so, you know, and, and doesn't see any change in sight. Um, so I, I thought that was interesting. But our, and our next TAC meeting is next Tuesday, so I'll give a report next time.
Okay.
All small, some parks and records, no meeting?
Okay.
No meetings, then.
I don't have anything to report. Um, Katie, has anyone signed up for a public comment, specifically Carol or Derek?
No, nobody.
Right. Any other business, Carol, counsel?
Well, I just wondered, um, I guess it's Paul. I can't see Paul. I know he's over there, but if you got any more progress report on the Oakdale Road sidewalk?
We have, uh, well, we've had some meetings with DOT, and some of the, uh, parcels that we are impacting, we, we know who to reach out to. Um, I've been in contact with them on other things, but, um, it's about five. It, it's the parcels that DOT purchased, those we do know how to go through the process.
Oh, okay.
I might have even been in that meeting. I've had so many meetings with DOT the last month.
Yeah.
But, um, so, we, we did pick up a few more that, of, of the properties that we need to, uh, agree with, which it won't be a problem with DOT. It's just going through their, um, their, their process. But we, we did establish the, the contact this, this month. And I think, uh, one other homeowner that we, we did get with this month.
Okay, okay. And then just Matt, have you heard any, any chatter about Oakdale Mill site?
I have not.
Okay.
Sorry, I just wanted, it's faster for me to get up here.
Yeah.
I have not had any, any contact about the Oakdale Mill site.
I hadn't heard any, okay. That's all I have.
Thanks.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?